This is modulating. We are live.
Oh, we're not gonna be like our neighbors' planning board?
No.
The silent film going?
No.
You ready?
I have six o'clock.
Go for it.
I think I got it. For five. Both of those, yeah. One's Marana, one's.
Good evening. This is the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five public hearing. The town of Newry Meeen Planning Board. This public hearing will come to order. My name is Ted Baker and I am the chairperson of the board. We have one person in attendance for the meeting. Thank you for coming. As I said, my name is Ted Baker. This is Bruce Pierce. Gooch got the air. The three of us comprise the planning board. We have two alternates, Rob at the end and Meredith over here.
We should state why. Which?
Yeah, 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 we're going.
Okay.
We're getting there. And we do have a, let the record show that we do have a quorum of the membership here. This public hearing covers an application which is currently before the board for review. It involves the creation of a minor subdivision off of Monkey Brook Road. Newry tax maps are thirteen dash zero one three dash D. And R thirteen dash thirteen D dash zero zero one. Purpose of this hearing is to allow the public, and as you say, residents, non-residents, taxpayers and non-taxpayers, the opportunity to address the board concerning the proposed subdivision under Maine's Freedom of Access Act. You, the public, have the right to address the board, take those to the hearing and make an audio or visual recording of the hearing. Any and all members of the public wishing to speak at this hearing will be required to state their, state to the record their name, if they're representing the business, the business name, their town of residence and the nature of their interest in the hearing. Tonight's hearing is being audio recorded by the board's recording secretary. If you would like or need access to the audio recording, please see the town administrator. I would also like to welcome Western Hills Access Television. And as viewers, please note that any video and or audio content recorded by Western Hills Access Television is private content and is not subject to Maine's Freedom of Access Act. And for those of you attending, and I think you've already signed in, thank you for doing that. I will recognize speakers in the following order. The applicant or the, or their agent will introduce and provide a brief presentation of the proposed subdivision. Questions through the chairperson to the applicant by members of the board. Questions and or requests for more detailed information on the evidence presented by the applicant through the chairperson to any abutter or other directly affected or proposed parties. Presentation by the abutter or others who will be directly affected by the proposed subdivision. Questions by the applicant and or the board members through the chairperson, through the abutter on their presentation. Rebutter statements and find the open period for anybody else who is interested in addressing the board. As stated earlier, any member of the public is welcome to address the board. However, the board's deliberations to approve, approve the conditions or deny the application may only consider testimony that provides evidence related to the performance standards or criteria of approval detailed in the town ordinance. Prior to the applicant's presentation, let me correct an error in the abutter's notification sent by the applicant. The subdivision is a minor subdivision, not a major subdivision as stated in the notification. Unless Rick you want to do more work.
No, thank you.
Are there any questions on how this hearing will be conducted? Okay, since we only have one person in attendance for the hearing, we'll go away with all the other formalities that we have here. Rick, would you like to give a quick presentation to Ms. Brown, is it?
It is.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me again for the record, Rick Dunn with Mainland Building Consultants, representing Forger Building LLC.
And Rick, if you would address the public and the television, we all know about it here at the turn.
I'll tip the board toward the camera probably too, so sorry for turning my back to the board.
Keep going.
Look, he's a little over. Do you think that's in the camera view?
I'm looking. I'm not a cameraman.
We'll walk you right off.
There we go.
Smooth movements, I like that.
She's got, she's got talent.
You're, you're in, you're in the frame.
Okay. Yeah, so minor subdivision being presented tonight. It's a seven lot subdivision, six new lots, one existing lot. The, the lots range in size from one acre to sixteen acres, but if you exclude a fairly large lot here called Lot One, then they average about one and a half acres in size. For this plan, a little bit of orientation. North is, is to the left of page. Building envelopes, I've just kind of crudely traced out in green, so it's easy to see for, on the camera and and in the audience, so we've got building envelopes. That's the spot where the, where a dwelling can be placed or a structure are shown in green. The, uh, we've got an easement for a shared drive for Lot One, for its building lot, that's shown in pink. We have a couple of stormwater easements for stormwater ponds. Those are shown in blue because of water. And we do have some minor wetlands. Most of the site is, is steeply sloping and, and doesn't contain wetlands. But there is a little, a little piece on the edge of the property. And then lastly, steep slope areas. There are contours on this plan where the contours get really close together and they actually start to look like one big gray blob. That's, oops, that's indicating that things are getting really steep. So the, the front of the site is all pretty hospitable, hospitable for building as far as home building. And then, you know, the, the back of the site ends up getting, getting pretty steep, as those who have been around the property know. There's private subsurface wastewater disposal and drilled, drilled wells to be utilized for sewer and water. I think, I noted the, the building envelopes in green, those are basically close to the road and using the, the existing road frontage. And there are three proposed driveways on Monkey Brook Road to be accessed via, via shared drive. So one driveway for Lot One and Six, and then a driveway for Four and Five, and a driveway for Two and, Lots Two and Three. So that's, um, that's the simplified version of, of what we're proposing. I'm happy to take any questions. You know, Tim and I have already spoken a little bit.
I just want to clarify one thing for, you know where it is, huh? Tamara, hi, huh? All right, and for the TV, Deer Run is here, huh? Just so everybody knows where this is, this is headed towards Jordan Bowl.
Yes, I hear.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Brown, do we have questions or would you like to make a statement?
No, I'd like, I have questions. Okay, you talked about the building sites, so you're gonna have all of those right close to Monkey Brook. They're gonna be right down. So what, what is it that you've arranged? Cause you talked about the slope of the land. So all that water is gonna be coming down on the building sites. So what are you doing there?
Uh, the building sites for erosion and sedentation control, we've got a detail for, for the each, there's basically a template for residential building that's provided as a, as a detail in this project. But essentially, each, each home builder in each site is responsible for managing their, their water.
So you're leaving it all in, up to the individuals?
To a certain extent. So you're responsible for making sure that, that any water that's obviously coming directly at the house, you probably want to redirect that and make sure that you've, you've got a swells as you would to get them away from foundations and, and that sort of thing. But as far as, is, there's not, because there's no internal subdivision road, because there's really not much happening out, out back, there's nothing proposed as far as structures go for that, as far as that goes. Then there's really no alteration to the existing, existing drainage pattern, so basically the water goes.
Down.
It goes where it goes currently, yeah.
You do have some required improvements that are being installed prior to sales of lots, namely to retention ponds, correct?
Yes, yep.
So, so you are doing some stormwater management infrastructure.
We are, yeah, yeah. And it's basically offset.
Might be what Mr. Brown was asking about, not necessarily the, the individual house lots.
And I understand that, we talked about that, the water going to the fire pond, but we, the location of your fire ponds, you've got one uphill.
They're, they're.
They're not fire ponds.
They're not fire ponds.
Okay, what is it then?
Retention pond. For stormwater management.
Sorry, okay. I labeled that one wrong.
That's all right.
Where the water's gonna go, can I say that? That, i- isn't this what, what it is, the water's gonna be diverted here?
So the water, the water actually kind of naturally, uh, this, this has a bit of a bowl to it. A lot of this, this hillside here, this peaks, you can see that there's a peak basically that follows the line that my pen is making here. And then, uh, all of the area to the right of my pen here is, is in a bowl-shaped area and it all comes down to this area where we have the stormwater pond. So it's headed there already. We're looking to, to collect it once it gets there and then slow it down. So we're gonna, we're gonna store, basically store some of it in, in that pond and then release it slowly. And that helps mitigate basically when you, when you, I'll get right, right to you Bruce, if that's right.
Rick, so some elk?
Yeah, and I've got a large one, I've got a large one on this side. If the drainage lines are helpful. Essentially, when, when you build homes, you do change the cover, the cover type from trees and, and forest floor to some less perky surfaces. And so that has the, the effect of increasing the peak runoff rates from a particular property. In the case of single-family residential lots, it's not a big increase, especially when you're looking at an area as, as big as twenty-eight acres, you know, and six new homes on twenty-eight acres is, is proportionally not a huge impact. But all the same, we want to make sure that we, we take steps to, to mitigate any of the increases from, from the, the change in those surface types. So, yeah, here's that, here's that watershed line that shows the area that, that sort of automatically drains to that pond. And, and then it's, you know, it disch- discharges to a naturally occurring wetland area where the water, you know, that, that hydrology is there already.
And I, I'm sorry, I should have introduced who I am. I'm Tamara Brown, probably some of you know me. But as far as we are in a butter, we're a lot, um, let's see, we're on Deer Run. We're the corner lot twelve one is who we are. So it looks like there's gonna be the, the, um, the shared driveway of, what is it? Six and?
Six and one.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, well, there's a pause. Just out of curiosity, what is, what are the capacities is supposed to be for these storage facilities, these storage ponds, these little runoff ponds?
I mean, I don't have a cubic footage right off the top of my head, and that's, that's part of the hydro会计 report that we produce. But essentially, they've got to be sized enough so that they, they make a difference in the amount of flow. So if I was to have, you know, to take it to an extreme, like if, if I had a drywall bucket, you know, for a size of pond for, for this area, then that drywall bucket's gonna fill in really fast, it's gonna fill up really fast. And then basically, the amount of flow that's coming in is gonna be the same as the amount of flow that's coming out. Meaning it's, it's not gonna do anything. But if I was to fill that with a, you know, a trickling garden hose and then let it out with a very slow trickle on the other side, it would take a long time to, to fill up that, that drywall bucket. And that's, that's essentially, we size these ponds so that they, they have enough storage to have that effect where we can, we can use that storage to slow release the water on, on the out as it's coming in.
And what's, what is that? What is the size based upon as far as the rainfall? Like the average yearly rainfall, the five-year, the ten-year incidence? Things like that, how, how do you base the size of that pond?
Sure, yeah, we, we look at, um, we look at storm events from the, from the two-year storm event. Statistically, that's, that's, that storm should happen every two years or whatever the, the corresponding statistic, you know, statistical analysis would be. All the way up to five-hundred-year storms. And so it's, it's engineer's judgment, basically. There, um, the, the industry standard is you kind of compare your two-year storm, your ten-year storm and your twenty-five-year storm. And you want to generally size your infrastructure, culverts and, and, and ponds as far as, you know, let's make sure that they're gonna hold together and all that for the twenty-five-year storm. But as engineers, it's inherent on us to look at other storm events and see really how it, how the pond functions, you know, through, through all anticipated storm events. So that, that ranges, we have, have data from, from NOAA. And, and the state, the state provides sort of what the industry uses for, for storm data based on updates from, from NOAA. So in this area, I think a, a twenty-five-year storm event would be somewhere in the neighborhood of five point one inches of, of rain in a twenty-four hour period, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown, you have any other questions?
Yeah. What, what was determined to be the width of that shared driveway with the, that's the, the back of Deer Run and Six and?
Six and one.
Sure, yeah. So that each of the driveway stubs is designed at fifteen feet wide to be built in, I think, twenty-five feet, an acre and a twenty-five feet deep. From there, the shared portion of, of the driveway for Lot Six and One is, is pretty short, right? So that's anticipated to be in the neighborhood of fourteen feet wide. And then after that, there's really no reason to have the fourteen-foot wide driveway. And, and then it's anticipated that the lot owner for, for Lot Six would reduce that width because there's no longer being shared, it's just one, one homeowner. One lot.
Is it typical to have a driveway? Aren't you going to be abutting the lot? Do you know what I'm saying?
Typical to have a driveway that's, that's near another lot?
Uh, isn't, it's not just near, isn't it abutting?
Yeah, the, the driveway itself's not right on the line, but, but yes, it's, it's close. I think it's got like a ten, between, depending on the, the width of the driveway, it's got between ten and fifteen feet separation from the property line.
So what I'm asking you is, is that typical? I mean, usually a driveway to, just a private driveway is not usually on a property line, is it?
It can be.
It can be.
It can be, yeah.
It's not subject to setbacks.
It's not.
It isn't?
Buildings are.
Well, that, that's why I'm surprised, I guess, because I know buildings are, usually buildings are twenty-five, aren't they?
No, it depends on which district they're in. We have four different districts.
So what does it range from?
This is only ten feet here.
It's only ten feet there? But you, you don't have to have a ten-foot there.
Not, not from a driveway.
For, not for a building.
For a structure, a shed or a house, it's gotta be ten feet from the property line.
What about a fence?
Fence can be right on the property line if both neighbors agree where that is.
So because this would be right on the property line, we couldn't put a fence in, is that what you're saying?
No, they, you can put a fence on your side, yeah. There's no setback for a fence either.
What you, what have you? What, what about your water and your sewer? Is each lot gonna have the, their individual?
Yes.
So is he selling just the lots?
Just the lots.
He's not doing any building?
That's correct.
But he is gonna have in his covenants certain restrictions as to what they can build?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So they will be having a... Hold on, is this a road association?
Nope.
They'll just do their own?
There will be a homeowners' association strictly for the maintenance.
Of the roads?
And repair of the stormwater management system.
Not the shared driveways?
The shared driveways are.
They'll just be between the two?
Shared driveways. There is also, there will also be an ease, each property that has, and excuse me for filling in for you, Rick. There's an e, each, the two lots that share a driveway will have an easement.
Yeah.
With each other.
Right.
Concerning the shared driveway, and that easement includes maintenance responsibilities.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. And I'm sorry if this is duplicate stuff, I'm just, you know, since this is just a selling of lots, it seems like it's just gonna, whoever's gonna end up owning is gonna be the one that we'll kind of be dealing with, right? As far as.
Either the owner or, or whoever they hire.
Right.
Developer, builder, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
The, the subdivider will be responsible for putting in the aprons off of the road on the driveway, which is the first thirty feet or so. And the rest of the driveway and the construction of the residence will be up to the lot owner. And the reason, the reason that the subdivider is responsible, will be responsible for the driveway apron is because of the road is a private road and the town wants to take measures to protect private road from damage from runoff and stormwater manage, mismanagement from the property.
Monkey Brook, that section was private.
I know. And I, as a home, well, a property owner, wanna be sure this, of the same thing, that we're not getting the, the runoff and of all of that onto our property. And Bruce, you know from plowing, I'm just wondering where all of this snow is gonna go for that shared that's right behind our lot? That's what I'm wondering about.
They could probably plow it one side and lay it in, one side the way out, maybe push it back in the bank on the back, you know, in between the two, you know, the, I, I don't know how these driveways are gonna be initially set up. So I, I don't know where snow, you know, placement of snow would be.
Cause when you get a lot of snow, it's just go, you know, it's.
Yeah, you're gonna get a snowbank.
Yeah.
But wherever it is, I mean, I, I, I don't think that that's gonna detrimentally affect anything, you know, as far as, you know, runoff or melting or anything like that, I mean, it's, I think it'll melt. Carefully, you've been seeing what you're saying as a board member.
Right.
The developer.
Yeah, so I'm saying as a plow guy.
The developer also puts in the retention ponds.
I just don't see how the retention pond is gonna help that corner lot. You know where we are, right Bruce? I, I, I don't, in my head, I can't understand how that's gonna help.
Yes. Thank you.
I think the nice part is, while it's, it's sort of a counterintuitive, when you, when you plow the snow up into a bank, it seems like a lot of snow and it's compressed there and stays there longer into the, into the spring. But it's, it's no more snow plowed into banks than it was, you know, basically on the ground prior. It's not like that's the creation of snow, so it's, it's really no more runoff from, as far as snowmelt goes, from the existing condition. It's just, that run, that snowmelt is coming from a bank of snow instead of a larger area of snow, which is the, the cleared road. The other thing that's helpful is that a, a snowmelt happens slowly and gradually, so it's nowhere, it's nowhere near on the scale as far as a surface water creator as, as what like a rain event would do.
Any other questions, Mr. Brown?
No.
Would you like, are you, are you, do you have a statement to make to the board or were you here just for questions?
No, I am very concerned about that. I'm, I'm concerned because I think that Deer Run, in that vicinity, it seems to be a very low area. It's, and I can just see some of that coming off into the back of a Deer Run property.
But you have no evidence to provide to the board to consider? The board, the board needs substantial, substantiated evidence other than just a concern to act on. And we, we have to, we have to apply the ordinance as written and make sure that the applicant is abiding by the ordinance. We cannot make subjective opinions as to, well, that's a low-lying area and there's gonna be flood problems and therefore you can't do that. We need to have substantiated evidence that we can act on. And while we hear what you're saying, without substantiated evidence, the board can't do, take anything for action. Now, I will say that if runoff from a property affects an abutting property, the owner of that offending property is required to manage that runoff. So, so while that doesn't help you beforehand, if you, if per se you find that you are, have a higher percentage of stormwater runoff onto your property and you can substantiate that, then you have grounds to go to the other homeowner and require them to take measures to correct that. But it had, you have, you're gonna have to substantiate that that runoff is greater now than it was previously.
That would be something that would go through the code enforcement.
And that would be something that would go through the code enforcement, obviously.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Or if not, then?
It's a civil matter. It becomes, it, it is a nuisance misdemeanor by state law. When you can't have water directed onto your property from somebody else's property. Even the lot right in Deer Run, if they happen to run their water, put in a pool and, and change the drainage and now it's all running onto your property, you can ask them to fix that, you can prove, you know, hey, this is not what it was last year, now we have all this water washing out my lawn.
Right.
That's something between two neighbors, that's a civil matter.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and I understand what you're saying about the, the abutter to you creating a, a problem, I get that. But in this issue, it's probably going to be the shared driveway, it's not actual, you know, would it actually be six and one or?
Possibly, uh, we don't know.
Yeah. I mean, that, I, that's why I was also asking about the shared driveway thing.
The, the plow guy that spoke, um, in Rick's definition, the snowbank is no greater snow than what's on that driveway when it's flat, just pushed up into a bank.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it's also going to be the way that the property is graded, that's the proper terminology. I, and I, the only reason I'm saying this is because we, we actually live in Harrison. We own this property, Deer Run, but we, okay. And we just had it built and they graded the property last fall. And they did a great job of it and we have like a slope here and, and so we have all this water that's all traveling down in back, which we wanted it to do. So I, that's what I'm getting at, I, you know, it's, I'm just curious as to how this is going to be graded, I guess, because that shared. because that shared driveway is gonna go uphill, right? It's gotta go uphill. So any of the plowing and the runoff is gonna be coming right down in back? Yeah.
It, it's uphill now.
I understand that it's uphill now, but you don't have the plowing to do.
You mean, we don't have any plowing?
It's all just snow in the woods.
Right. Right. Rick, I have a question.
Sure.
The wetland, the pond on Lot One and the wetland associated with it, where does that flow now? Do you, do you show that?
Yeah, you can get, uh... I'll draw right on top. Normally I cap my pen, cause I got a bad habit of drawing on plans, but-
Gotcha.
For, for here, we'll go with it. So, uh, and I appreciate the question, so the, the wetland, we only map what's on the applicant's property, so as not to-
Right.
-infringe on, you know, mapping on someone else's property. But this, this wetland is all generally flowing in the direction of, of the arrows that I'm making here. My, my opinion is that if we were to have continued mapping that, this, this wetland boundary would have continued some, somewhere on uh, the, you know, the Deer Run subdivision. So it's, and you can see from the contours there, it's basically following this pattern here. There's a little bit of contour that's indicating that it's starting to head in this direction, um, when you get interior to this, this lot here, the second lot in Deer Run. So that's, that's the current drainage patterns for basically the, the hole from this mountainside. It all comes down to the wetlands as things, and this is actually pretty typical. Uh, you have a steep slope, and that water runs, uh, on the surface, and it also runs in the, in the ground. Uh, typically in this area, it'll run on top of a ledge or on top of a, a hardpan, hard packed soil, dense soil. And then you get a change in the grade all of a sudden, so things flatten out, and when that happens, you have wetlands emerge, cause that, that brings the seasonal high water table, uh, that's perched on top of that, that, uh, dense soil layer, that brings that water table up a little bit. Cause it was going fast, and then it flattens out, so that it goes, whoop. Um, and then you usually find, uh, at a changing grade, and this one followed kind of the rules, like we're used to seeing. Uh, it went steep, 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 and then it flattened out right here, and there's, yep, there's a little bit of wetland, um, where the water table came up, as well as, uh, it, there'll, there'll be, you know, vegetation that follows that hydrology.
Okay.
From the wetland.
Thank you.
So, so Mr. Brown, is, is it possible that the grading that you did on your property has directed stormwater runoff into the vacant property that is now to be developed?
Are you talking about in Harrison where we are now here?
No. You're a lot here, you said you graded, you graded the land.
No, no, sorry if I confused you, I was telling you that we just built a house in Harrison.
Oh, oh.
Okay, it came across that you-
No, no, I'm sorry. And, and I'm sorry, I was referring to some, some groundwork that we had done in Harrison, and that's why I was aware of how the water is traveling, cause we had to do it that way.
The board misunderstood, it sounded that you had done, done grading.
But we have, we have five acres where we are, so we wanted it to go somewhere, and that's exactly, we, we put it in the Litchfield, is what we did, you know? But, okay, so, I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Um, so what you were just talking about, and I think that's why you asked the question, is you're saying that the way it is right now, the water is dive, it, it's going down into the Deer Run?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what we would call an, an existing drainage pattern. It's, it's going over to Deer Run.
It's doing it right now.
Yeah. That's just the natural land form.
I mean, and that's a huge drainage space in there, cause you go right into-
Yeah.
You know, Kendall's swamp.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah.
Bog, yeah.
Huh? Bog, Kendall bog, sorry. That's my, you know, it's always swamp, I wouldn't.
So when these new people go in there and build their properties, they can always add fill, right, and they can build theirs up.
Yeah.
They are required to have an erosion control plan, and they're gonna show me all those grades and stamps when they apply for the building permit.
Okay.
Just, yeah, I can hopefully cut off ahead of the games, they, and that's gonna create a nuisance.
Yeah.
Hopefully they, I, I can see that. Um, and at the end of your road, just for your peace of mind, you're getting a new culvert this year, so.
And I'm not trying to create a quag here, I, I know I sound like a-
Nope, no, it's good to ask the question.
It's just, yeah. I just know that that lot is wet, you know, where we are, I just know it's wet, and that's why I'm curious how it's all gonna work out in that shared driveway. I, I'm just, does that happen very often in Newry, where people just put in a shared driveway, and it's fourteen feet? How, typically, how, how wide is a, is a driveway?
A driveway's going anywhere from eight to fifteen per ordinance. Eight's too narrow, as we all, UPS would have a hard time backing out of that.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That's just about the width of a path.
I know.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, anything else that you'd like to?
What are the lots gonna go for?
I do not know that.
Not, not a concern to the-
Yeah, no, no, no business of ours, huh?
I don't mind you asking.
If I wanted to buy one.
Oh, no, but it's not for our review.
I don't mind you asking, I just don't understand.
Okay.
Okay, any other last questions from the board? I will adjourn this public hearing. You ready? Good evening, this is the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Town of Newry Main Planning Board. This meeting will come to order, my name is Ted Baker, I am the chairperson for the board. This is a public proceeding, and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said. Unless the board votes to enter into executive session per Maine's Freedom of Access Act, you also have the right to review any material created or received by the board that relates to the board's deliberation unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or if you would like access to any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded, if you would like or need access to the, to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town's administrator. I would like to welcome Western Hill Access Television and its viewers. Please note that the content televised and or reported by Western Hill Access Television is private content and not subject to the Maine Freedom of Access Act.
We note that this meeting is starting at six thirty-seven, you can run the previous meeting back here.
As I've been reminded by the recording secretary, this meeting is starting at six-
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. As a result of the public hearing which just adjourned. And this is a working session of the planning board. Maine Freedom of Access Act entitled to public to attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audio or video recording of the meetings. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. I, I'm a registered person, I may allow exceptions, but it is in the interest of the board. By the Newry Planning Board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. The meeting may be extended by thirty minute increments if a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each thirty increment. The meeting is not extended, any remaining agenda items or discussions will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business, correspondence received, Four J Development LLC application for a minor subdivision on Monkey Brook Road, application number twenty-five dash two-eight-five, Timberline TH LLC application for a site plan subdivision on Timberline Road, application number twenty-five dash two-eight-six. Prior to attending to the above business, the board first must conduct some administrative procedures, the first of which is attendance. Per Section two dot B of the Newry Planning Board Ordinance, amended June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members, in order for a meeting to proceed, it must, I must first establish that a quorum is present. The quorum consists of two voting members, the members of the board, and myself, Bruce Pierce, vice chair, and Gooch Dratier. All three of them are present, and therefore we have a quorum. We also have Meredith Harrop as alternate, and Rob K, as alternate, present, let the record show that we have a quorum. Having ascertained that a quorum exists, let's discuss voting eligibility. A voting member that was absent from the previous meeting is not eligible to vote on all business unless they have completed an affidavit stating that they had reviewed the material for the missed meeting, read the draft minutes, and have listened to the audio recording of the minutes of the meeting. All five of us were here at the last meeting, and therefore, everybody is eligible should you have to vote. The alternates are not appointed for this meeting. Uh, let's move on to minutes of the prior meeting. Does any member of the board have any edits or comments on the minutes?
I do. The, uh, last page, open discussion, Section B, line two.
Line two, what's the second, second sentence he thought?
Second, well, the second line. Um, starts out, the group discussed town roads in discussion that took place at the last meeting, where it stated that some roads are up to the standards that they ought to be. That's not up to the standards they ought to be.
No, no, that's correct.
That's correct.
Sunday River, there, and the public portion of Monkey Brook are up to the standards that they ought to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm wrong.
No, that's okay, that's why we talk about these things.
Thank you, John, anybody else have any other comments on the minutes? Having hearing done, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
I like a motion to approve the minutes as drafted. I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made and promptly seconded to approve the minutes of Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Three. The minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, having completed our administrative duties, let's move on to tonight's business, first of which is the correspondence received. Uh, the first of which is an email from Thomas Kares dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, requesting material on application twenty-five, eighty-five. Joel, uh, I think that you satisfied that request.
I did.
Are there any comments on the email correspondence from Thomas Kares?
I received nothing back after I emailed him the plans and specifications.
Okay. So noted. Next correspondence is a voicemail from Chris Bullock, requesting material on application twenty-five, two-eight-five, is that correct, two-eight-five? And you satisfied that request?
I did, it was, it was a return phone call, that was all it was.
Okay. All right, let's move on to uh, Gora Palmero's engineering memo dated April third, twenty twenty-five. And that was, I believe, the one that dealt with Monkey, with, with this, with the Monkey Brook one, right?
No, the Village of Timberline.
Oh, it was Village of Timberline, why do I have it down as the, uh, April eighth here? Or is that the date?
It says Village of Timberline.
Village of Timberline, April eighth. All right, if that is, uh, dealing with the Timberline correspondence, we'll take, take that into account. Take that, you talking about the, uh, sorry, Department Chief left? No, we're talking about the, this letter from Gora Palmer on Timberline.
On?
That's dated April eighth, I, for some reason, I put down April third on my, uh, plan here. I don't believe we have something from Gora Palmer. What's the, for the Monkey Brook, Joel, what's the date of the Gora Palmer?
Uh, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, okay.
It was submitted last week.
So that was just a type of error on my part, I put down April third, okay.
Yeah, cause we've gone through all this.
Uh, Becky, do you have this for the record?
They may go away.
Yeah, fully, okay. Okay, and we have a letter from the Newry Fire Department dated April seventh, present, uh, and that letter also deals with the Timberline subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
And Becky, do you have that for the record? You don't either read it, read it, and we can, we'll deal with that when we get to Timberline.
Sure.
Okay. And Mr. Duncan, you have a piece of all this?
I do.
You have any questions or comments on those four comments?
We're working on, uh, responses currently to the board, uh, for all of those correspondents.
All right, so we have this stuff, uh, yes. All right, let's move on to Four J Development LLC, Monkey Brook Road subdivision twenty-five, two-eight-five. Uh, just a quick review, we first, uh, discussed this application on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And then we tabled it, and we brought it off the table on March nineteenth. And in that meeting, we found the application to be formally complete. And the board decided that a site visit would not be necessary, that a public hearing on the application would be scheduled for April sixteenth, and the hearing was set at six o'clock, and we just concluded that hearing. Uh, the applicant informed us that they will be electing to do a conditional agreement with the town in lieu of providing a financial performance guarantee. And the board determined that the code enforcement officer would act as the inspecting official. And the applicant confirmed that they will not be submitting any waiver for performance standards per U D R O Section twenty-two B, nor required improvements per U D R O Section twenty-two C. And we also discussed that the SLOTA permit, and that the applicant would draft a condition of approval to make sure that the development stays within the exception rule for the SLOTA permit, which you did, thank you very much for doing that, Rick. And we discussed the engineering review memorandum from Gora Palmer at March, dated March seventeenth. I would like to go through that response to comments from the applicant to that engineering comment. We all should have a letter in front of us prepared by Mainland Development Consulting, Inc., titled Response to Comments, dated April third, twenty twenty-five, do we all have one of those in front of us? Looks like this, without the yellow highlighter. It was delivered to your doorstep in a very fat package, and had a lot of different stuff with it.
What's in here, so we're not-
Gooch, you all set?
Yeah.
And Rob? Okay, uh, any questions on item number one, erosion sediment control? The applicant, uh, made amendments to C one on, on sheet C nine point one, showing a typical erosion sediment control around a typical house. Do we have typical homes in Newry? All right, any questions on number one from the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. Number two. Gora Palmer, the recommendation to add a note to the subdivision plan indicates the maximum development area. And the applicant has revised Plan S2.1 with note regarding maximum development area for use in I G O C A D. Any questions about that? Our consulting engineer also had some issues with the grading associated with the infiltration basin number one. Sounds a lot better than detention pond, doesn't it? Infiltration basin number one. And the applicant has altered basin number one and regraded to bring the top of the cut 10 feet away from the adjoining property line. And that is detailed in Plan C2.1. Our consulting engineer also required about a stormwater management maintenance plan, and that was submitted with this package. And it says here for me to see comments on the plan. Oh. Mr. Dunn, if I could direct you to host construction stormwater inspection and maintenance plan, Monkey Brook Road subdivision will remain. Are you familiar with that document right here?
I am.
Would you please read the second paragraph?
Oh goodness, I think this is headed somewhere.
Would you please edit out Woods Pond Village homeowners association? And put in the correct name of the association.
Yes, thank you.
Also, I did not note a provision to afford maintenance and/or make available inspection and maintenance logs to the town annually. And so that will resurface itself when we come to conditions of approval. As well as a five-year recertification by a main licensed professional engineer was not discussed in the maintenance plan. And the last but not least was that this-
He has a question, Ted.
Yeah, can you just repeat that one time? It sounded like that was, is that something to be?
We will cover this again when we get, the plan does not discuss a five-year recertification plan. And so that will be a condition of approval that we will review here shortly.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
The five-year recertification plan is very common on main DEP stormwater maintenance.
Yeah, because now that gets submitted to them on a five-year basis.
Right, right. And the town gets, we get-
When the HOA is aware of it.
Right, and on a, on a non-DEP project, you get the-
They've worn out, they'll go for this one.
We go for this one. Mainly because of major, you know, Mother Nature being what she's been the last three or four years, it's something that we like to have.
Yeah, I think it's fine if you as a town want to ask for it, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was just a confusion.
But the town needs to be able to go to an HOA and say, you need the maintainer.
How's it going?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we understand.
All right, so. We haven't, Joel, we have not gotten our consultants rebuttal to this submission, right?
No.
Okay. Test pit SW2 was identified as approximate elevation. Okay, you added an outlet structure to a vertical orifice at the bottom of basin number one to drain seasonal high groundwater. See updated hydrocrad report and plans. That sounds like something that Gora Palmer should be all over. Number six. How will the detention basin number two be accessed for maintenance? And you have added a easement on lot number one for that. So that's been taken care of. And there's appeared to be a modeling deficiency in detention basin number two. This is item number seven. And you have corrected that from year notes. The emergency spillway needs to have an impermeable barrier, and you've corrected that. Would you please address us on item number nine and show us where the riprap apron for the outfall of detention basin number two is on revised sheet 2.1?
So I kind of scribbled on it already a little bit, but there's a, there's a riprap at the base of the emergency spillway, which is the weir, as well as the outlet of the pipe right here.
And where is that noted for, so that the inspecting official can make sure that it's in place?
Is it on the detail page?
It's, it's on C2.1. Shown on C2.1, it's not specifically noted and we can, on the details. This is the weir detail. There's not specifically a detail here that shows riprap or a riprap area.
Okay, well, the, our consulting engineer said that you need to provide riprap apron on outlet control structure outlet pipe. And you said you did that. So the question I have is how will the inspecting official be able to, one, note that they should look for riprap? And then, nope, so where they should be looking for it?
It's on C2.1, the plan C2.1 is depicted there.
Okay. Riprap and all?
Yeah.
He should, and Rob? All right, I'll take it.
I'll let you.
And inspecting official, you're gonna be okay with that?
Yes. Let count them.
And you, item number 10, you updated the I G O C A D to provide one foot of freeboard during the 25-year storm. Does anybody else have any other issues with the rebuttal from the applicant on our consulting engineer's first consultation? Is there another page? Yes, there's two more pages. Items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and some additional stuff. Followed by Mr. Burns's signature. I was happy with the response and everything here. I just want to make sure that everybody else was. Oh, on the conditional agreement. Rick? Yeah. The conditional agreement is between the applicant and the select board. Any reference to the planning board in the conditional agreement needs to be edited to read the select board. There are several references to that.
There are quasi-judicial bond.
And we do not have the ability to enter the town into a conditional agreement. That is the purview of the select board.
That makes a lot of sense now that you say it.
So I'm sure our lawyer-
Check the agreement on the-
Has not.
That one got edited on-
Oh, it did?
Yeah, on our, but once it made it to lawyers, that got edited.
Oh, you edited it before it entered the-
The pine.
Oh, the pine, yeah.
He's got a template, he should say.
Right. Temples need to be looked at.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, otherwise we are discussing some others, the Woods Pond Village homeowners. Okay. Any questions on the rebuttal from the applicant to their consulting engineer's comments? Next is conditions of approval. The board members will find a hard copy of proposed conditions of approval. And if you have not done so, please look at them now. All right. We have in front of us 11 proposed conditions of approval. Let's go through each one, every one of them, starting with number one. The 11th one will be read to you orally. It was a late edition. Condition number one, this approval is limited to the proposal as set forth in the application and supporting documents, except as modified by specific conditions adopted by the planning board in approving this application. Any variation from the application or conditions of approval is subject to prior review and approval by the planning board. Failure to obtain prior approval for variations shall constitute a violation of the ordinance. Any questions on that? And we'll entertain a motion to include this as a condition of approval.
Make a motion to include item number one as a condition of approval. I'll second it.
Are you, are you done?
Yeah, I think that's the correct way to say it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's very efficient.
But I will, I will second that.
Item number one on the proposed conditions of approval has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on this? This is a standard clause that just reinforces that everything has to be done according to the application, and any variance from the application needs to come to the planning board. There are no further discussions. I will take a vote. One?
Two?
Three. Item number, condition of approval number one has been approved. Condition number two. A substantial start, which is defined as 30% of project based on estimated cost of construction of the required improvements approved by this application must be complete within 24 months of issuance of the planning board approval. If not, this application shall lapse and no activity shall occur unless and until a new application is approved. This is reinforcing section 3E of the U D R O. That establishes a time limit for the start of construction. Nothing different here than what's in the U D R O, it just puts it on the plan. Any questions from members of the board or the applicant? Hearing none, I will take a motion to include item number two as a condition of approval.
I'll make a motion that item number two, condition of approval, be accepted. I'll second that.
A motion has been made and promptly seconded to include condition of approval number two on the application. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote.
One? Two?
Three. Condition of approval number two has been approved unanimously. Condition number three. All required improvements must be substantially complete within 18 months of the start of construction. If not, this application shall lapse and no further activity shall occur unless and until the application is resubmitted and receives planning board approval. Again, this is reiteration of U D R O section, section 3E, where we talk about commencing an amount of time to complete a project. There is no deviation from what's stated in the U D R O. Any questions, comments? Hearing no questions or comments, I will take a motion for inclusion of condition of approval number three on the application.
I make a motion that item number three is approved. That's not my rate, is it?
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll work with that.
Be approved.
Okay, be approved.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second have been made to include condition of approval number three on the application. Any further discussion?
One?
No? Discussion.
Discussion, sorry.
Hearing no further discussion, let's take a vote.
One?
Two? Three. Condition of approval number three has been accepted to be placed on the application. Condition of approval number four. Once construction is complete, the subdivider shall notify the code enforcement officer that all required, required requirements and conditions of approval have been met. Following notification, the code enforcement officer may arrange and conduct a compliance inspection. Again, this is in accordance with section 3E of the, or, no, section 6, I think.
Is this where I'm the inspection official?
Well, no, this is, in, well, in this case, there would be one and the same.
There would.
But the code enforcement officer is one level above the inspect, if there was an independent inspection official, the code enforcement officer is one level above that.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure I've been using the right title for whichever hat I'm wearing.
Is that, is the correct word, may arrange or shall arrange?
May arrange. It's up to the code enforcement officer.
Okay. She likes that, I think.
We can send it to she, to shall, but she wants, she wants a-
May, so we'll leave it at may.
That's fine, yeah.
All right. Any further comments or any questions on condition of approval number four? If not, I will take a motion. I make a motion that we accept item number four for conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and promptly seconded to accept condition of approval number four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One?
Two? Three. Condition number, of approval number four has been accepted, passed, and will be placed on the application. Condition of approval number five. Prior to the conveyance of any lot, the subdivider must enter into a conditional agreement with the town as per the Unified Development Review Ordinance, known as the U D R O. Section 24, this conditional agreement is in lieu of a financial performance guarantee required by the ordinance. This is straight out of section 24. The applicant has indicated at the last, the March 19th meeting, that that was what they wanted to do for the performance guarantee, is that correct, Mr. Dunn?
That's correct.
And there has been a draft agreement that has been forwarded to the town attorney and is currently being reviewed. When that comes back, it will go before the select board. Having it as a condition of approval means that we don't have to have it in hand approved by both parties prior to approving this application. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a vote on condition- If not, I will entertain a vote on condition of approval number five. All right, I stand a motion first, please, excuse me.
I make a motion that we accept conditions of approval number five.
I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve condition of approval number five for this application. Any further discussion?
In my U D R O, section twenty-four is definitions.
You're right, it should be section twenty-two, right?
Go ahead, take a look there. Three.
Either twenty-one or twenty-two.
Twenty-two. waiver of submission requirements, waiver of performance standards, waivers of required improvements, waivers of...
No, okay, how about twenty-three then?
Growth management districts and non-performance.
Yes, okay, twenty-one, okay, I stand corrected. This should read, let the record show that this is section twenty-one that we are talking about, not...
Types of guarantees.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one half cut it.
Okay.
So, so the condition of approval should read, prior to the conveyance of any lot, the subdivider must enter into a conditional agreement with the town as per Unified Development Review Ordinance, U D R O, section twenty-one. This conditional agreement is in lieu of the financial performance guarantee required by the ordinance. Thank you for catching that, Gooch. I appreciate that. I got that edited in line right there. I will, was the motion made?
Yep.
A motion has been made and property seconded. Do we need to correct that motion or not?
Well, I put it during discussion, I would know that that was a statement.
I will therefore, seeing that we have no further discussion, take a vote on condition of approval number five.
Number one.
Oh, one. Once, I make a motion that we accept...
The motion's been made.
Two.
We're not voting.
Yep, let's introduce it.
Three. Condition of approval number five has been, been approved.
Am I going too fast for you?
No, 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 it's all right. Just ready for nap, that's all.
I'm trying to lull the buyer to sleep.
It's working.
All right, let's move on here. We're all getting punchy, we still got a long night to go in front of us here. Okay, condition of approval number six, lots within this subdivision are restricted to single-family residential use only. Commercial development, as defined by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, site location of development rules, section three seventy-one, is prohibited and thus farmer approval by the Maine D E P and the Town of Newry Planning Board is abdained. That was, in essence, what you wrote as a draft. Do you have any?
I think it sounds better that way than the way I wrote it, so.
Oh, man, you know how to...
Is that brown music? Yeah, I made a note that I'm gonna get that revised, updated on the...
For the board, if you recall, we've had a discussion that that this subdivision is greater than twenty acres but less than thirty, I believe, of restriction. And it's also less than fifteen lots and therefore an exception can be made to having to pursue a site location of development permit as long as the lots are restricted to single-family residential. And so, this introduces it to the application, to the final plan and allows, gives the town some teeth to enforce it should a business try to establish itself on one of the lots. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve number six.
I will make a motion that we accept item number six and we conduct the conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
A motion with a proper second to accept condition of approval number six has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number six has been passed. Condition of approval number seven, conveyance of a lot must include the common driveway easement and maintenance agreement as well as the declaration of restrictions and protective covenants included in the application materials. This condition is included to ensure that any deed that conveys the lot from the subdivider to a new owner will contain these covenants. And a sample, a common, the common driveway easement and maintenance agreement was included in the application package and so it's already written and out there for review. Any comments or questions on why we have number seven?
Should this easement agreement also discuss the stormwater ponds?
That is coming.
That's coming, okay. I make a motion that...
Yes, that's coming, yes. Your question will be satisfied in a couple, in a couple of points here.
Okay.
You may proceed with your made motion, please, Gooch.
Okay. I make a motion that condition of approval number seven be approved.
I will second that motion.
A motion has been made and property seconded to include condition of approval number seven on the application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number seven has been approved unanimously for inclusion in the application. On the panel plan, I should say. Moving on to number eight. Condition of approval number eight, stormwater ponds shall be staked out for review and approval by the inspecting official prior to the construction of ponds. This item was suggested at the March nineteenth meeting, I believe, by the code enforcement officer. Or if not that, by Gooch, one of the two. And the purpose here is to make sure that the storm, that the stormwater infrastructure or required improvements are as per the plan before they get in place. Questions, comments?
Just, I guess, quickly, staked out, is that, is there any type of surveying done type of thing, or is this just going around saying like, oh, this is a good spot and staking it up? I'm just curious.
No, they're gonna be where they're shown on the plan and they'll have transit on site that I can use.
I think they got their little fancy, fancy GPS that says you're here.
That's right.
All right, hearing no further discussions, I will take a vote on... I'll take a motion on condition number eight.
I'll make a motion to accept item number eight of the conditions of approval for this application.
I'll second that.
A motion with a proper second to approve condition of approval number eight has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number eight has been unanimously approved for inclusion in the final plan. Number nine, construction of the driveway aprons for lots one through six are the responsibility of the subdivider. Prior to conveyance of a lot, the driveway entrance serving that lot must be accepted by the inspecting official. We had discussions in previous, on March nineteenth, about ensuring consistency and quality of construction of the driveway apron to make sure that they were built according to plan. And once a lot is sold, we basically lose control of that lot. And so this is a way of ensuring that that driveway apron is built according to the plan and will protect it for the owner of the private road to the best degree possible.
Would the inspecting official like the lots, the driveway entrances to be staked out when they're constructed?
Are the lots, do they, lots have ironed in this corner? Yeah. Not needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that number nine be approved.
I'll second that motion.
A motion with a proper second to approve condition of approval number nine has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number nine has been unanimously approved for inclusion on the final plan. Okay, Gooch, this is yours here. The maintenance and or repair of the stormwater management required improvements are the responsibility of the subdivider and or homeowners association. Annual records of maintenance and repairs must be made available to the town upon request. Stormwater management required improvements must be inspected and certified every five years by a main licensed professional engineer and submitted to the town for review. So this establishes the requirement for the subdivider to complete the required improvements for the stormwater management plan as depicted on the plan. It also stipulates that either the subdivider and or the homeowners association, once they take over the subdivision, are responsible for the maintenance and repairs to the stormwater management system. And also requires that a five-year recertification be made by a professional engineer to make sure that the required improvements are in, still functioning as they are intended to be. The five-year requirement comes from the Maine D E P requirement when they have a stormwater management system as part of their slot of permit. And it should not be anything unfamiliar to me and them. Do you have any comments there, Mr. Dunham, on this?
Nope. While it discusses, discusses maintenance and repair, but it doesn't say anything about construction.
That's on the developer. The ponds have to be constructed before they can convey any lots.
Yeah, and they're gonna be staked out, so, okay.
I think because they're on the final plan, we have, there's really no need to say that they're required, the required improvements are part of the subdivider.
Correct.
I mean, they'll all be inspected and approved anyway before anything happens, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on condition of approval number ten. Excuse me, I'm jumping ahead of myself here. A motion, thank you, Becky. A motion on item number ten.
I'd make a motion that condition of approval number ten be approved.
I'll second that motion.
A motion with a proper second to approve condition of approval number ten has been made. Any final discussions? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number ten has been approved for inclusion on the final plan. Okay, everybody, listen up carefully because you don't have the next one on your, in front of you. All dwelling units must meet the life, safety, and fire suppression standards. Unified Development Review Ordinance, U D R O, section thirteen, that dot A C. The existing dwelling unit on lot seven, Newry land use permit, building permit, number zero seven slash two zero two zero, is an existing non-conformant structure as per U D R O, section twenty-three I, and does not need to meet the requirements of section thirteen dot A C. So, performance standard, number thirteen, section thirteen A C, which is life, safety, and fire suppression, has a requirement there that the final plan stipulate either sprinklers or access to a rather large fire pond.
Fire pond.
Where's that going?
Not fire pond, it's a sister, and, excuse me.
Yeah, no sisters either.
And I believe that...
I just forwarded this to you in type.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I started typing and I... We're gonna get this from Joe.
Thirteen A C. Performance standard thirteen A C.
Okay.
In this application, was it mentioned in the sand page eighty-eight? Application, is it gonna be sprinkled or might it be a little...
I thought, I thought it was.
Yeah.
I don't know if it, this, I don't think this is mentioned because they're not talking about homes.
Oh, true.
This is a, this gives me some teeth when individual property owners come in and start submitting applications.
Yeah, they both...
Yeah, I, I thought we had somewhere in one of the forms noted that it was gonna be sprinkled.
Yeah, you probably, you probably did on the submission of number, probably ten point two, probably stated that it would be sprinkled. So, this is nothing new. It just puts, it satisfies the U D R O requirement that it be on the final plan.
Yeah, I was just gonna answer Becky's question.
And because lot seven is an existing lot that has to be included in the subdivision because of its time of sale, the existing dwelling unit on there is a existing non-conformant structure.
Right.
However, should those owners of that lot build a A D U, it would have to be sprinkled. That would be a fun one for the code enforcement officer to go after. All right, any other comments on condition of approval number eleven? Hearing no further comments, I will take a motion that we approve number eleven.
I will make a motion that we accept item number eleven for the conditions of approval for this application.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and properly seconded to include condition of approval number eleven on the final plan. Any further discussion? I will therefore take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Condition of approval number eleven has been approved for inclusion on the final plan. I draw, you said you forwarded to Rick all eleven of these?
Yep, just did it.
All right. Is everybody good to continue? Do we need to take a...
I'll go to the bathroom.
The, this, the board will recess for approximately five minutes for humanitarian purposes.
Yep, don't try.
No, I'm just trying not to...
I know, was that bad experience with her?
The water is good, the writer and I drink it all day.
I know, I've been informed.
All right, they're good.
Do you have the big water softener down in the basement?
Yep. We are still being recorded.
It's a filter, I don't think it's, you're not softening it, are you? No, you're treating it for iron, though.
I have no idea what we're doing.
Yeah, you're treating it for iron.
There's something down in the basement.
The water softener.
So we're not, just so everybody knows, we are still recording. I'm not messing with that.
We're not on the audio.
Keep them handy, do you have the criteria too?
Yes, please.
All right, I hope you'll have to follow along.
I do want to scrub on a little bit.
That's right. Does anyone else need a copy of the checklist of the performance or criteria rule?
You will need one for the next meeting if you don't have one. This? This.
I have handed these out multiple times. I have handed these out multiple times.
Yeah.
I, I'll take it.
I have it somewhere.
You're a homework assignment, which I know you diligently.
I put my check mark, I could arrange my check mark. Papers, gee.
Put you on the spot.
Performance.
Yep, excuse me.
And criteria for later, we're gonna need both. Oh, and Gooch has it.
Crossed, push up, safety guard. I bet I have them somewhere, I just don't care.
Do you need one?
Push it and fill the towels here.
I'm trying to get Gooch on you when Ted reads these off, he just goes so moved. He goes quicker that way.
Yeah.
He's already read it and done all the hard work for you, just so moved.
Yeah. From now on, all these are.
Yeah, exactly.
Jason, so Jason hasn't come to any of the meetings, right? I didn't think so. Thinking of the other days, like, yeah. Having to see him, I don't think I've seen his face in a while.
I think it's starting to firm up up there a little bit now, or?
It is, yeah. And the contractors, I mean, I probably get three calls a day. When you're gonna pull the signs, when do you pull posted signs? Well, and we typically follow this day to day because Route twenty-six is posted.
Yeah.
So, when that comes down is when I usually look at mine, but we may start pecking away at a couple of smaller ones.
Yeah, I was following a big triaxle down Southern River Road and they said, please go left from the monkey book. Please go left from the monkey book. I didn't do it.
Yeah, yeah, there's several different companies trucking Merrill Hill right now. That's the only thing they can do. Even a couple of our local subdivisions off of non-posted section of Southern River Road posted the subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, you know.
Yeah, I saw that.
I don't know how they would enforce it, but.
Yeah, the peaks, uh, colony.
Cowards posted, yeah, yeah.
And did they get the sign from you or did they go get the?
I don't know whether they got the sign from you.
Okay.
Tell them, like I tell my, my kids, yes, again, it's gonna be another day.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll tell them, know when the signs are.
I do it when we're hiking. Are we all those there? Keep asking, gonna add another mile. I think I handed out one for each project that's on the agenda. So you might have multiple copies, but you just haven't.
I've got one five one and I've got two thirteen ones.
There are five point one and two, thirteen point one and two separate.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm saying I have two of these thirteen one.
Oh, on the, uh, checkoff sheet? The waivers for, for submission need to be above final acceptance of the submission.
So all of these I printed are now gonna be recycled?
Uh, so, I think you have, this is an old one, but it needs to be above application complete, not oral application complete. You, you have one of the new ones there?
I thought I pulled them up, I opened up my bag and it's not much.
So you have, you have, um...
Well.
Where's the, where do they see that?
I don't think I did it wrong.
Oh, no, this is old, oh, no, this is, no. Submission requirements.
Yeah, but that should, yes, yes, submission requirements, this needs to be above, above, uh, for application complete.
Don't trust it. Send it, send it soon, come on, please.
This next, submission requirements, waiver for submission requirements should, needs to be considered before we find an application complete.
But, the format standards stay down there.
Yes, they stand, they stand, they stay down there.
Can be in the middle.
Right, right, so because this is submission requirements.
Yep. No, totally need signs now that it's done. Yeah, got it. I'll print new ones tomorrow. I might not get to it tomorrow. All right. We're gonna get them out of circulation though because they're up there, I hand them home.
Yes. Okay.
But we're still waiting for, uh...
And, oh, oops.
I think so.
And I didn't, I made like a super minor change to the Sherman zoning one, but I wanted to keep them the same date. You know what I mean? Just so it didn't get confusing.
Okay. Energize the recorders.
We're back, huh? Okay, we are recording.
We are back in session. Next on our checkoff list is to review performance standards and criteria approval. For expedition purposes, I am gonna ask, has any board member or alternate member have any performance standard that is either not in compliance or basically does not comply? In other words, all the performance standards either are not applicable or they comply, as in to be found or have an issue with one that is not.
Um... Oh, I did the wrong one. I've got... I've got a whiskey here.
Oh, you're in Timberline?
Yeah.
We'll get to that one in three weeks.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, so, we are talking Monkey Brook subdivision, and I just wanna verify if we have, if anybody has an issue with a performance standard in the category that does not comply. Hearing none, let's go on to conditions of approval. Do I have a chance to come back to performance standards one more time?
Criteria approval.
We're, we're jumping to criteria of approval.
Are we going through the whole process?
Yes, we are gonna start the, we're gonna start the laborious process. And we'll get back to performance standards when we get down to the very last criteria approval. Okay, we are going to start deliberations on criteria of approval. And as Mr. Dutton is well aware, at this point, the application is locked down. And whatever we find, we find. There are no changes going forward. Okay, first criteria of approval. And this is, uh, chapter, section five of the UDRO. And we are on A, which is pollution. As a finding of fact, the subdivision lots are restricted to single-family residential use. And the applicant has submitted a satisfactory soil profile and classification analysis with no deficiencies noted. And therefore, I will make the conclusion of law that the criteria for pollution has been met or is in compliance.
I'll second that.
With any, well, that's not a motion yet.
Oh, sorry.
Just a statement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, does any, does anybody want to amend or edit the finding of fact? Hearing none, how about the conclusion of law? All right, I will make a motion that the subdivisions are, the subdivision is restricted to single-family residential use and a satisfactory soil profile and classification analysis has shown that they can support single residential use for wastewater and therefore, the criteria for pollution is in compliance.
I'll second that.
It's been made, moved, and seconded that the criteria of approval for pollution has been met. Any further discussion? I'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Passes unanimously. All right, erosion. Anybody have a finding of fact for erosion that they would like to put forth? A detailed plan for, can you read my own for control for? A detailed plan to control soil erosion is included in the application. A detailed storm water management plan is also detailed in the application. And that being the finding of fact, it is my conclusion of law that the, the conditions of erosion have been met. And I will make that the motion unless somebody has anything to discuss with it.
No, I'm, I'm good, second that motion.
A motion has been made and properly seconded that the criteria approval for erosion is in, has been met and is in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Traffic. Uh, findings of fact, the subdivision relies on an existing private road. That road being Monkey Brook. The subdivision has, the subdivider has coordinated with the owner of the private road to limit the number of driveways used for the subdivision. And therefore, my conclusion is that the final fact, finding of fact is that it's just a seven, you know, seven lot minor subdivision. The impact on traffic is negligible. And therefore, the conclusion of law is that criteria approval for traffic is in compliance. And I will make that a motion.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, but that means you seconded, Gooch?
Oh, I, I will second C, traffic.
Okay. A motion has been made and properly seconded to find condition, criteria approval for traffic is in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will, we'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Criteria of approval C for traffic has been approved unanimously. How about D sewage disposal? Does anybody have any finding of fact to put forth?
The developer has brought forth soil test kits that prove that you can put adequate sewage disposal on site. And because it's gonna be private septic systems, it shouldn't have any burden on municipal services.
So, I hear two findings of fact. The first is that the applicant has provided adequate proof that a sub, well, subsurface wastewater disposal system can support the single unit residential properties. And two, that since they are private subsurface water disposal system, there is no impact on municipal. Another way of saying what?
Yep, that's a good way to say it.
Okay, you got that?
I have it on tape.
You got it on tape, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I will take a motion on criteria approval D sewage disposal.
I make a motion that D sewage disposal has been met.
I'll second that motion.
A motion with a proper second that criteria approval D sewage disposal has been met, has been made. Any last discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that criteria approval D for sewage disposal was approved unanimously. Next, we go to E, which is municipal solid waste disposal. And the sub, the finding of fact is the subdivision is for seven residential lots. Each lot will be responsible for their disposing of their individual solid waste. The second finding of fact is by Nury ordinance, construction debris in the building of those lots is required to be handled by the contractor. And so the impact on municipal solid waste disposal should be minimal. Any discussion or comments on there?
So, does each of those lots have to have a dumpster on site?
No.
No?
No.
They just have to, they just have to clear of their solid waste in a manner that will not attract the attention of the select board.
Most contractors are using their own dumpsters.
But this, this covers both, this not only the construction, but also the subsequent use of the property for residential purposes.
The subdivision is seven lots, but we're only reviewing six of them?
The subdivision is seven lots because...
Because there's one already existing.
One is already existent and the sale of that lot occurred within five years of the application for subdivision. Therefore, by state law, it must be included in the subdivision. Although it raises some sticky wickets as to what the applicant can enforce on that existing lot and what it can't.
And best left it right there.
And best left it right there, so.
Yeah, I think the correct word is sticky wicket.
The only question that would be, uh, and this would be equivalent for the lawyer, uh, is, um, they're probably, are they required to join the HOA?
That, that's not up to me.
I know, but that's a question for the lawyer.
Do we have to ask that to approve the plan?
No.
Okay. So is it our attorney that needs to be asked or the developer's attorney that needs to be asked?
Again.
Okay.
And you say sticky wicket.
The developer, should they choose, could put it all on one lot. I wouldn't recommend it, but it's like whenever they write it on the association.
All in one lot?
They, they could, they could say the, this association is gonna be made up of, of one.
Well, that's true, they, they could, they could just say that the owner of lot number one is responsible for.
For everything.
For everything.
We have a fire pond, a fire pond in town and has that.
Yep.
I guess the question is.
All right, um, let's move on now to F, aesthetic.
We haven't approved.
You didn't like make a motion and move it down.
We didn't? Okay, uh, you're right, I didn't. Any further discussion on municipal solid waste disposal? Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve criteria approval E?
I'll make a motion that we approve item E means the solid municipal solid waste disposal.
I'll second that.
A motion with a proper second that define criteria approval or for approval, E municipal solid waste has been met, has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval E municipal solid waste was approved unanimously and is in compliance. Moving on to F, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Is a, is a board member willing to make any findings of fact to this?
Well, I, um.
As a, there are no known aesthetic, cultural, or natural values to the two parcels that are in question.
Two?
Yes, there, it's actually two parcels, you got the parcel that was sold back in
Okay, yeah, and the other one.
And the other one, so unfortunately, that's why we always refer to this as two parcels. Although it's one big, it was originally one big parcel, it's been split once already.
We do what historic say. Doesn't have a foundation in there.
Yeah, because it's not historic by definition.
And right now, we're talking about aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. Let the finding of fact show that there are no known aesthetic, cultural, and natural values on the two parcels that comprise the application. And therefore, my finding, my conclusion of law is that we are in compliance. And I will make a motion that criteria for approval F aesthetic, cultural, and natural values is in compliance, since there are no known aesthetic, cultural, or natural values that have been brought to the board's attention.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that criteria for approval F aesthetic, cultural, and natural values is found in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval F aesthetic, cultural, and natural values has been found to be in compliance by unanimous vote. Going on to G, financial and technical capacity.
I believe we have a letter from the bank.
The bank, yeah.
Saying that it's possible to do. Or am I thinking the other one?
And think you got, don't recall, we, we do already, I don't believe that we submitted a
I don't think for a minor subdivision is required.
I don't believe one was, I don't think there was one submitted, I think you're getting timberline
Okay.
Confused. As a find, as a finding of fact, the subdivision of the lot is, is for lots only with no major required improvements, and the emphasis on major.
Okay.
And there has been a, there has been a condition of agreement, uh, there's been a conditional a condition of approval requiring a conditional agreement prohibiting the convenience of lots prior to the completion of the stormwater management system.
So, the construction needs to be in place before any laws can get made?
That is correct, that is the, that is basically the requirement of the conditional agreement.
But does that does that stipulate that, that there is financial and technical capacity to, to do that?
No, it does not, however, um, the, I am putting forth that the required improvements are minor enough that they are not a significant financial burden, if I recall the estimate for the
I just removed my sticker from that page.
Was thirty thousand dollars. That doesn't include the consulting fee from me and them.
Very reasonable.
Exactly. Well worth all the expertise.
Does, uh, does that satisfy you or not?
Yeah, yeah, well.
Good, you, good, good that, how about the alternates, any comments?
All right, I get it.
This may be helpful for the board, just a short comment, we did actually submit a letter from Franklin Savings Bank.
Oh, okay, do you have the date for that?
January tenth, it's the date on that one.
And for the record, will you please read it aloud?
It's, yes, so to whom it may concern, this letter is to confirm that Four J Development LLC has a financing capacity of thirty thousand to perform the construction of the Monkey Brook Road subdivision project, please don't hesitate. It's called, if you should have any concern, questions or concerns, uh, phone number, I can be emailed at, an email.
You got that, uh, that letter's in the application package, so.
Yes.
All right. All right, that should, but any final
There you go.
Reservations, you rest? Uh, may I have a motion that, on financial, technical capacity, please?
I'll make a motion that uh, item G financial, technical capacity is met, and applies, is in compliance.
I will make a second on that. A motion for the second has been made, defining financial, technical capacity is in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval G financial, technical capacity was found to be in compliance by unanimous vote. H sufficient water.
This subdivision is, at least on the lower sections, in a sand and gravel aquifer. So, I believe that there's sufficient water available for this subdivision.
I would concur, in addition to that, the applicant submitted a survey of wells in the vicinity, existing wells in the vicinity. And for the most part, they all showed capacity of water, don't think any of it were dry, although one or two were over, over abundant. Supports the efficiency of water. So, those are the two findings of fact. Any other discussion? Is there enough water in the period?
Yeah, it's been shut off.
I will entertain a motion for criteria for approval H sufficient water.
Um, I make a motion that H sufficient water supply has been met.
I'll second that motion.
A motion with a proper second that condition for approval, or criteria for approval H sufficient water is in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval H sufficient water has been found in compliance by unanimous vote. I will make the motion that criteria for approval I public water supply. Yes, I am making a motion that criteria for approval public water supply does not apply.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded that criteria for approval public water supply does not apply. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Criteria for approval public water supply has been found to not apply by unanimous vote. Surface waters J. Uh, I will also make a motion that criteria for approval J surface waters does not apply. And the finding of fact is that the parcel, both parcels are not situated within a watershed. I said watershed, uh, excuse me, second on that? Yes, please, second that.
I will second, but J surface water supplies is not
What was the finding of fact?
Uh, uh.
It's not within two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Not within two hundred and fifty.
Within fifty feet.
Of any pond or water, or water.
Water, true jury, thank you. Getting punchy when I was reading these down. All right, it's been made and seconded, it's been motioned and seconded that criteria for approval J surface waters does not apply. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that, that criteria for approval J surface waters does not apply by unanimous vote. Let's move on to K groundwater. Criteria for approval groundwater. Finding of fact, the stormwater management plan will construct, well, the, the stormwater management plan has been made as part of the application and has required improvements.
But stormwater plan doesn't affect groundwater quality.
All right. Point well taken, I'll, I'll rescind my finding of fact.
The subdivision is for eight, six, seven, seven, there we go. Uh, single-family homes. And that in itself should not affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. And they also have approved subsurface wastewater disposal systems.
Right, maybe there was a soil analysis that revealed that they could take a subsurface water wastewater disposal system. Correct? Good, thank you, bringing that one, John. Any other quick discussions on this? Uh, and therefore, you're saying, Gooch, that it's in compliance then?
Yes, I make a motion that K groundwater is in compliance.
Second that.
A motion with a second, finding criteria for approval K groundwater is in compliance. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval K groundwater has been found in compliance by unanimous vote.
I would like to make a motion that L flood areas is not, um, applicable, there we go, that's the word I was looking for.
And the finding of fact of that would be that it is in a, not in a, that the parcels are not in a FEMA flood zone. Now, that was a motion, right, John?
Yeah.
Uh, I will second that. A motion with a second, finding criteria for approval flood areas that the two parcels are not in a FEMA flood zone and therefore condition for approval L flood areas does not apply. A little redundant there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval flood areas was found not to be applicable by unanimous vote.
I make a motion that M freshwater wetlands has been, is in compliance. They've identified a couple of free wetland areas and what they intend to do with them.
I'll second that motion.
In addition, the freshwater wetlands are really not significant in terms of protection, right?
Correct.
They're not large enough. Do require special consideration, if I understand?
Yeah, because they're not against a great pond, correct.
Okay, so, John, your motion was that is, does it not apply, right, or?
No, it's applicable.
Is, is applicable, it's in compliance, okay.
Yeah, it's in compliance, yeah.
And Bruce, you seconded that?
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded that the criteria for approval M freshwater wetlands is in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval M freshwater wetlands has been found in compliance by unanimous vote. Moving on to N, river streams or brooks. I will make a motion with the following finding of fact, that no river, stream, or brook has been identified within or abutting the project. And therefore, my conclusion is that this criteria for approval does not apply.
Second.
A motion with a proper second for criteria for approval N river streams and brooks have been made, finding that this condition for, this criteria for approval does not apply. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval N river streams or brooks has been found not to apply by unanimous vote. Moving on to O, stormwater.
The applicant has included in his application uh, extensive plan for adequate stormwater management.
I would agree with that, does anybody have any comments to make towards that? So, your conclusion then is that?
O stormwater has been met.
Has been met, all right, now is the motion.
I'm gonna make a motion, oh, stormwater has been met, yes.
I'll second that.
The motion with a second has been made that criteria for approval stormwater has been, has, has been found in compliance.
That'll work.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval O stormwater has been found to be in compliance by unanimous vote. I will make a motion that criteria for approval P spaghetti lots prohibited does not apply since, and the finding of fact is that neither parcel of this application borders a great pond or other body of water.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded that criteria for approval spaghetti lots prohibited has been found to be not applicable since the two parcels involved in the application do not abut or are on, located on or near any body of water, great pond, et cetera.
I'll second that.
And seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval spaghetti lots prohibited is found not to be applicable by unanimous vote. Moving on to Q, criteria for approval municipal services. I will look forward to finding, the following finding of fact, that the proposed subdivision is for seven single-family residential lots. Another finding of fact is that the new fire department did not find any faults with the impact on its services.
Correct.
And these structures are to be sprinkled.
And the, and third finding of fact is that the structures will be required to be sprinkled. Any further discussion or addition to the findings of fact? Hearing none, I'll take a motion, please.
I make motion that Q municipal services has been met, second.
A motion with a proper second, that criteria for approval municipal services has, is, has been found in compliance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote please.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval municipal services has been found to be in compliance by unanimous vote. I will make a motion that criteria for approval R Lake Prosperous Concentration does not apply. And my finding of fact is that neither parcel in, in this application is located in the Howard Pond watershed zone.
It's not located.
No, it's not located in the Howard Pond watershed zone. Does anybody want to dispute that? Okay, but since I hear none of the disputes, I will take the motion, oh, I made the motion.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor?
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval R, Lake Prosperous Concentration, has been deemed not to apply. Because the parcels are not in the Howard Pond watershed zone.
I make a motion that S, impact on adjacent... adjoining municipality is not applicable. Because it is not adjoining another town. I'll second.
Nice job. All right. Okay, a motion has been made and properly seconded. That criteria for approval S, impact on adjoining municipalities, has been found not to be applicable. Since neither parcel adjoins another municipality. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval impact on adjoining municipalities has been found not to apply. Due to the fact that neither parcel abuts another municipality.
And I'm gonna make a motion for T, for land subject to liquidation harvesting, does not apply because there's not really anything to cut down there.
Just because there's nothing to cut down doesn't mean they haven't got it.
Well.
Yeah, I think we have a letter saying...
I believe liquidation harvesting has to be within the last five years.
Rob was saying something too.
I think there's a letter in the package saying it didn't happen.
Yes. Okay. Okay, Bruce, what's your finding of fact?
That the acreage is not suitable for timber harvesting in liquidation form.
And it never happened.
It never happened.
It never happened, okay. That... how about that the applicant has submitted a letter to that effect?
And the applicant has submitted a letter to that effect.
I can buy that. I will... and that was your motion? Did you make that motion?
I did.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been motioned and seconded that criteria for approval T, land subject to liquidation harvesting, does not apply. Hearing no further discussion, I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that criteria for approval T, land subject to liquidation harvesting, was found not to be applicable by unanimous vote. Okay. Criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans. This gives us our opportunity here to go back to performance standards and any other standards such as roads and driveways in the U D R O. I went through all thirty-four performance standards and while I found plenty that did not apply, I did not find any that were not in compliance. Does any other board member or alternate member have any issues with any performance standards or other local ordinances?
No, I think not.
And...
Nashville's everything good.
And I believe the... for the addressing, that should not be an issue because it's... there's plenty of road frontage. So the numbers will not be... and support the numbers that are already in existence further down the road. All right. Last chance. Anybody else have any issues with this application in complying with the U D R O or any other town ordinance? Hearing none, I will make a motion that criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, has been met.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded that criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, has been... has been found in in compliance. Do you vote?
What's that?
Do you vote?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, but you gotta...
Any discussion? I will take a vote, please.
One, two, three.
Some of these things I can...
It's already approved in the minutes. Becky's already typed away.
Let the record show that the criteria for approval U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, has been found to be in compliance by unanimous vote. All right.
So quickly, just to show I actually did this before. I actually did it, but I just didn't know where it was.
Can we put that on the refrigerator?
Oh, darn.
Nicely done there, Bruce. Well done, well done.
You've got fifteen minutes.
Mr. Dunn. We will need the final plan and its supporting documents. How many copies? One, two?
I would do three.
Three. Okay, of everything or just the plans?
Just the plans.
Okay, how about the supporting documents?
Declaration of covenants?
Yep. Form... the submissions, Form 10.1, 10.2, 10.3, 10.4. And all the company... all the attachments to support that.
We have all that.
We have that in... but not correlated into one...
Okay.
Clean...
Correlated would be great.
One clean copy.
Yeah.
So you... you gave us... you amended the application. First one had a nice bounder on it, the second one just had a binder, binding labs. And we need that. Correlated into one final...
Yep.
One final one.
And I think three is plenty.
Three is probably more than that, more than enough. What are you gonna do with three?
Well, one goes in my office, one gets filed here, Becky gets one, at least.
Well, the one that I get, I can give back.
That's true, and that can be the one.
I just needed to do the finding of facts.
Okay.
And the thing is, is you're not gonna change any information on that, none of the dates, nothing like that.
No, we just... it just...
It just gets put together different.
It gets put together in one package instead of having the initial application and the subsequent submissions on top of that.
Right, so... so all of those with their dates have been listed in the finding of facts? Do I need to take this new document and list everything again?
No, no. I think if we just get two copies of the next one, it's a note that is there.
Yeah, it just says like which meeting it was submitted at and...
Yeah, this just simplifies the archival filing. Should we have to go back in this, we don't have to believe...
Yeah, I don't think you need it for your minutes.
No.
I think just gonna make it easier in the two file cabinet.
There's nothing new and no due dates and stuff, I don't...
So for the final drawing, final planned drawings, we need what's stipulated in the ordinance for a submission to the registry of deeds, et cetera.
Right, I do want copies of those because those are gonna be the dates you can change where you add conditions of approval. Right, so that'll be a revision date.
That's why I want three.
I want that.
Yeah.
Those, I want.
But we only need two of the supporting...
Correct.
Documents. The forms 10.1, 10.2, 10.3, 10.4, and all the composes...
Amendments.
That you put together for that.
We do not need another hydro cap report. I think we've killed enough trees for that.
Okay, but that final record's gonna then be absent of hydro cap report if you throw everything else away.
I can just add the hydro that we've got.
Yes.
I think... because your binder's gonna be this thick if you put that in there.
When you add... I'm just now getting the process with you that I haven't done it this way yet.
Right. I think I don't... I don't think... the general public can't read the hydro report anyway.
That's why they can, but they... yeah.
Yeah, so I can take that from all the submitted materials we have and put that in the file cabinet in conjunction with the next binder you give me. Okay, thank you.
And so then it's three copies of revised plans and we're providing a revised subdivision plan. I'm not aware of...
And I don't need a full-size copy. I can do the eleven by seventeen.
I think the registry does do eleven by seventeen now also, don't they? Do they?
For scan?
I don't know, I'll leave that up to you.
I wouldn't dare to do that, yeah. At least for their signature copy and your signature copy and recording one, I would do full size.
Yeah, okay.
But I think so that would be one...
Eleven by seventeen. I just need the full... put title information and dates and stuff on.
For the...
For the finding of fact.
For the full set or just the subdivision plan?
For all your plans.
All of them.
Yeah, whatever's changed... whatever's gonna get a new date on it. I need that plan. Like if a plan, nothing changes and it's not... there's not a new date on it, that would be good.
Then you're awesome, okay.
Because if you obviously submitted it at previous meeting.
Yeah, we would like the... what the one plan that is missing is an index plan that tabulates all the plans that make up the collection.
It was a cover sheet plan.
Did we have a... okay.
Yeah, both of them have a cover sheet plan. It's like C point...
Yeah, okay.
It's kind of atypical for some...
C O point O.
Yeah, we did it. Just something that we saw that five years from now is making me look into this and say, okay, we should have these plans. All right. I will make the following motion. I move that the Newry Planning Board give its conditional approval to application twenty-five dash two-eight-five, four J... Is it development or just four J LLC?
Four J Development.
Four J Development LLC. Minor subdivision on Monkey Brook Road. And if you will include the parcel numbers, please. I don't have them in my head.
Monkey Brook Road subdivision.
Plus R thirteen, thirteen dash D dash one.
All right, Monkey Brook Road subdivision parcel, tax map number R thirteen, D dash one, and R thirteen, zero thirteen dash D zero zero one? That doesn't sound correct.
That's just big parcel.
But the beginning of your...
I might hold on.
I don't know, I was... I did everything to...
All right, uh, okay. The condition... the conditions... the conditions of this approval are as follows. One, the approval is limited to proposal as set forth in the application and supporting documents except as modified by specific conditions adopted by the planning board in approving this application. Any variation from the application or condition of approval are subject to prior review and approval by the planning board. Faded to obtain prior approval for variation shall constitute a violation of the ordinance. Condition of approval number two. A substantial start, that is thirty percent of project based on estimated cost of construction of the required improvements approved by this application must be complete within twenty-four months of issuance of planning board approval. If not, this application shall lapse and no activity shall occur unless and until a new application is approved. Condition of approval number three. All required improvements must be substantially complete within eighteen months of the start of construction. If not, this application shall lapse and no further activities shall occur unless and until the application is resubmitted and receives planning board approval. Condition of approval number four. Once construction is complete, the subdivider shall notify the code enforcement officer that all requirements and conditions of approval have been met. Following notification, the code enforcement officer may arrange and conduct a compliance inspection. Condition of approval number five. Prior to the conveyance of any lot for the subdivide... lot, the subdivider must enter into a conditional agreement with the town as per Unified Development Review Ordinance, Section twenty-four. This conditional agreement is in lieu of the financial performance guarantee required by the ordinance. Condition of approval number six. Lots within this subdivision are restricted to single-family residential use only. Commercial development as defined by Maine Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, site location of development rules, Section three-seven-one, is prohibited unless the prior approval by the... by Maine D E P and the Town of Newry Planning Board is obtained. Condition of approval number seven. Conveyance of a lot must include the common driveway easement and maintenance agreement as well as the declaration of restricted and protected covenants included in the application materials. Condition of approval number eight. Stormwater ponds shall be staked out for review and approval by the inspecting officer prior to the construction of the ponds. Condition of approval number nine. Construction of the driveway aprons for lots one to six are the responsibility of the subdivider. Prior to the conveyance of a lot, the driveway entrance serving that lot must be accepted by the inspecting official. Condition of approval number ten. The maintenance or repair of the stormwater management required improvements are the responsibility of the subdivider and/or homeowners association. Annual records for the maintenance and repairs must be made available to the town upon request. Stormwater management required improvements must be inspected and certified every five years by a Maine licensed professional engineer and submitted to the town for review. Condition of approval number eleven. All dwelling units must meet the life safety and fire suppression standards Unified Development Review Ordinance, Section thirteen dot A C. The existing dwelling unit on Lot seven, Newry Land Use Building Permit Number zero-seven slash two-zero-two-zero is an existing non-conforming structure as per U D R O, Section twenty-three I, and does not need to meet the requirements of Section thirteen dot A C.
When you reviewed I number five, did you remember to change this to Section twenty-one?
For the record, let me repeat condition of approval number twenty... uh, number five. Condition of approval number five should read, prior to the conveyance of any lot, the subdivider must enter into a conditional agreement with the town as per Unified Development Review Ordinance, Section twenty-one. This condition... this conditional agreement is in lieu of a financial performance guarantee required by the ordinance. Thank you for that. As well as the conditions of approval, the inspecting official for this application will be the town's code enforcement officer. That is my motion.
I'll second it.
A motion to... and a motion and a proper second to give conditional approval to application twenty-five dash two-eight-five with the conditions of approval just stated earlier has been made. Has there any discussion to this motion? Hearing no discussions, I will take a vote on giving conditional approval to application number twenty-five dash two-eight-five.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that application twenty-five dash two-eight-five, four J Development LLC, minor subdivision on Monkey Brook Road, has been given conditional approval with the eleven conditions stated in the motion.
So be it.
I make a motion that we extend this meeting... I make a motion that we extend this meeting by thirty minutes at the most.
At the most. I'll second that, at the most.
Have we, yes, Mr. Dunn?
I have one question for clarification. I, I had made.
Do you wanna just vote on this real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah.
This motion?
Yeah. Was that, you seconded that, right?
Yeah, he did.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
A motion has been made and seconded that we extend the meeting by thirty minutes to extend no longer than nine o'clock tonight. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Alright. The motion passes. What's your question there, Mr. Dunn?
Sorry, that was so reflexive. I had made notes on a couple of things that I think needed to be edited and I wanna make sure, but the application's locked, but I'm about to submit clean copies back to the board. I'd very much like that with Woods Pond Association from, uh, from the maintenance plan.
Yes, please do that.
As well as I'm gonna add a five-year recertification requirement to that document.
So I would like copies of those and, um, so I can say the revised one has been.
Yes, that was my question.
The Woods, the Woods Pond is an edit that should be done, the re, five-year recertification is a condition of approval. Whether you include that in the management, in the storm management plan or not is up to you.
Okay. It, so, is it alright if, if that, what, what, like, what I didn't wanna do is submit something back to you as being.
A change.
Right, here, here, I'm attesting and saying, here's all of the current copies unchanged back to you. Uh, in a, you know, in a clean bind and that I've made changes, that's not appropriate unless you as a board recognize and want those changes.
So far, so far the edit, the two edits you've brought up have been discussed and are part of the final plan.
Okay. And then an edit to the suggested agreement between the town and the applicant.
Conditional agreement, suggested.
Yeah, right. To select board, should I change that for the clean copy of the?
Yes. What, and I'm sure what that, that, again, that is a condition of agreement. That condition, the conditional agreement is a condition of approval. When that gets executed, it just has to be executed prior to the commencement of construction. So our, the town lawyers and your lawyers can battle that back and forth as long as it's resolved before start of construction.
I mean, I, I, I'm basically, we can put a a version that says planning board because it was seen and that's when, you know, that's, that's the last version that you guys had in front of you. Or I could correct it to say select board. It's up, I guess it's up to you, it's just, I'm trying to figure out how to.
I would correct it and say select board.
Yeah.
It was an edit that, it was an edit that we discussed in the, in the meeting.
I'd correct it and say select board, but then go ahead and submit a copy here, just for the file.
And that, whatever was, whatever you submitted, it's been forwarded to the law, to the town lawyers anyway, so hopefully they will come back with with that change.
Hopefully they catch it.
Thank you, just making sure I'm doing that appropriately.
Okay. We have, in three weeks, another public hearing. And we have a site visit first, we have a site visit at five o'clock to take place up at the Phoenix on May seventh at five o'clock, we then reconvene here at six o'clock for a public hearing on application twenty-five dash two eight six Timberline. And after that, we will go into conditions of approval and start deliberation on performance standards and criteria for approval. And it would be
So you're talking about Timberline.
We're talking about Timberline, we're talking about application twenty-five dash two eight six. And it would be ideal if we can slog through that completed application at the next meeting. That's my goal. So.
Noble goal.
Bruce, next.
Please.
Well, you're not even gonna be here.
And she can tune in through western.
I'm gonna be sick, I don't even have cell, so.
So board members and alternates, please do our homework and be prepared to deliberate on whether or not application to twenty-five dash two eight six meets meets with condition or does not meet the town of Newry ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a email I received from a direct of butter to two five two eighty-six handed out tonight? Or would you rather wait and have that for the public hearing?
Let's, let's have that in the public hearing package, you can certainly forward that to us.
Electronically? I have forwarded it to the agent already.
Right.
Do you wanna reference these since we these are in regards to.
We, we, we put them, we put, they were covered in the correspondence and that we received them.
But they'll be discussed.
They would, they'd be discussed at that meeting. So, uh, Joel, make sure that the Newry Fire Department is part of the submitted rule for the public hearing.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The letter from the Newry Fire Department.
Yeah.
Should be.
I've submitted it.
I know, it's been submitted.
I gotta do it again?
No, no, just make, just listed on this, one of the correspondence items for the public hearing. You don't need to.
Okay, you and I should talk about public hearings tomorrow.
We will talk about public hearings tomorrow. Anything else that we want to? It's been a long meeting. I will table any other items that are potentially before the board tonight. And state that we have a meeting at, a site meet plan, a site visit on May seventh at five o'clock at Eight Timberline Road in Newry. Followed by a public hearing at six o'clock on May seventh here at the town office. Followed by our regularly scheduled planning board meeting on May seventh.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Which was, while I'm looking on these finding effects and stuff, I've seen it. And I keep telling myself I wanna look at the sign on the way by and I always forget, but, so Timberline, is it Drive or Timberline Road? It's written on our tax maps. I know, but it's been, it's been referenced in both ways.
That's a good question.
With all this documentation.
We'll ask the nine-one-one officer.
I know.
Well, they're on the tax maps online, I mean, they're right there.
Well, I keep, I drive by it.
Okay.
Twice a day at least.
I will take.
I almost say Timberline Drive.
Uh, it's probably Drive.
Half the time it's written as Timberline Drive, half the time it's written as Timberline Road.
I'm, I'm supposed to be the stickler for detail.
But I'm always driving by it, but I never think to look.
Road.
Is it?
Road.
We always have a road.
I started with it too.
Alright, it's my sincere appreciation for everybody to put up with this tonight, it's been a long, drawn-out meeting. We got to where we wanted to. Mr. Pierce, I'm sure you're dying to make the next motion.
I make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting of Wednesday, April sixteen. Sixteen. Yeah, that's it.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded that we adjourn this meeting of the Newry Planning Board. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three. This meeting, this meeting has been adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you guys for your time.